All right, good evening. We'll call this meeting to order. Today is our organizational meeting. It is Thursday, January 6, 2022, at 5:30 p.m., and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And we'll begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome to all of our returning board members. We don't have anyone newly elected this year, so we are all continuing in our current roles as directors of the Wasika School Board. Moving on, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
First and a second. I'll let Caitlin pick who she wants to give that one to. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimous. All right, we'll move on then to the organization of school board. Tonight, we need to elect officers. There's four officers every year that we have in our policy. We have Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, and Treasurer. Then we'll establish meeting dates, designate school committees, newspaper, depository, school attorney, all sorts of stuff like that. So this is our annual organizational meeting, and I love organizations, so this is probably my favorite meeting. I'm just kidding. All right, so for the election of officers, we've done this for several years. I think everyone here is pretty familiar with that, but for the public, any board member may nominate any other board member. You may also nominate yourself. Nominations do not require a second, and board members may choose to accept or decline a nomination. If no other nominations are immediately received, the acting chair should pause and repeat the call for nominations, and then we'll repeat the call for a third time for nominations. After the third call, if there's no other nominations, the acting chair should close the nominations for office. You can make a motion to reopen nominations, and that can be adopted by a majority vote. If only one board member is nominated for a position, the Chair can declare that candidate elected by acclamation. If two or more members are nominated for an office, we will conduct a vote with a show of hands, and the candidate with the majority of votes will be elected. So, clear? Awesome. All right, so we'll begin with the Office of Chair. The Chair presides at all meetings of the school board, countersigns all orders upon the Treasurer for claims allowed by the school board, represents the school board in all actions, and performs all duties the Chair usually performs. The Chair also meets with the Superintendent to set the meeting agenda. So nominations are now in order for the Office of Chair. Which means anyone can make a nomination, so. Sure. Yeah, it's fine.
I'll nominate Julie Anderson for the Office of Chairperson of the school board.
Okay. Thank you. I will accept the nomination. I'm willing to continue as Chair. Are there any further nominations for the Office of Chair? All right, are there any further nominations for the Office of Chair? No one? No.
Like, no reading, want more, or?
No, it's fine. It's, no, I can, I don't mind. I can keep doing it. If there are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Chair are closed. Julie Anderson is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Chair, and I hereby declare her elected by acclamation and direct that this be recorded in the minutes. So, one of these years, one of you guys. But I don't mind. Eric and I have fun in those agenda meetings, so. All right, we will move on then to the Office of Vice Chair. Katie Youngberg has served in this position for the last few years. The position of Vice Chair is an optional position, but Wasika Public Schools has chosen to include this, include this position for our officers. The Vice Chair shall perform the duties of the Chair in the event of the Chair's temporary absence. So nominations are now in order for the Office of Vice Chair.
I nominate Katie Youngberg.
Katie Youngberg, Katie Youngberg is nominated. Do you accept this nomination?
Yes.
All right. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? Are there any further nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? And any further nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Vice Chair are closed. Katie Youngberg is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Vice Chair, and I hereby declare her elected by acclamation and direct that this be recorded in the minutes. We'll move on then to the Office of Clerk, and Dave Dunn has served in this role for the last few years. The Clerk performs a number of duties assisted by the district office personnel, most notably the Clerk signs contracts. Nominations are now in order for the Office of Clerk.
I would like to nominate Dave Dunn for the position of Clerk on the school board.
All right. Dave Dunn has been nominated. Do you accept this nomination?
Yes, I do.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? Are there any further nominations for the Office of Clerk? And are there any further nominations for the Office of Clerk? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Clerk are closed. Dave Dunn is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Clerk, and I hereby declare him elected by acclamation and direct that this be recorded in the minutes. Moving on then to our final position is the Office of Treasurer. Scott Demel has been the Treasurer for the last few years. The Treasurer performs a number of duties assisted by the district office personnel. The Treasurer also serves on the Finance Committee. Nominations are now in order for the Office of Treasurer.
I'll nominate Scott Demel for the Office of Treasurer for the school board.
Scott Demel is nominated. Do you accept this nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Treasurer? Are there any further nominations for the Office of Treasurer? And last time, are there any further nominations for the Office of Treasurer? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Treasurer are closed. Scott Demel is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Treasurer, and I hereby declare him elected by acclamation and direct that this be recorded in the minutes. All right. That was painless. We will move on then to our meeting dates. Our schedule of meeting dates, time, and location. And Caitlin did provide a tentative schedule. I think the only question I had, everything it looks to me like is on the first and third Thursday. The only one that's not is September. So the meetings right now are September 8th and September 22nd, which are technically the second and fourth Thursdays, which is what we did this last year because Labor Day is late. So we can continue with that, or we could go back to the first and the third. So either way is fine. So does anyone have a thought on that? My only, my only thought to keep it the first and third is just so it's always the first and third, but sometimes when the first Thursday falls on September, on the first of the month, you kind of forget that it's there, so.
I think stay with the way, I think it worked out well this year.
Okay.
Yeah, the October meeting is late due to MEA.
Yep.
So if you move that from September 22nd to September 15th, you create a little bit larger gap.
Yep.
Before your October meeting, so leaving it the way it is probably serves a purpose in that regard, too.
Okay. And then, other than that, yeah, so yeah, the October meeting is October, is October 27th. And then just of note, our teaching taxation meeting is currently scheduled for December 15th, so, and that one will meet at 6 o'clock instead of 5:30. We don't have to vote on these, right? We just establish them, or do we vote on them? I can't remember.
It is a vote.
We do vote, okay.
The school board.
Awesome. And since the committee meetings are on the same document, should we address the committee meetings with this as well? Because.
These are just the, what we currently have set for dates.
And Caitlin brought up possibly moving the regular policy committee meeting, is that right?
A Monday earlier.
Yes. Because a lot of times, it's the, the second Monday falls on the same week as the third Thursday, so there isn't a lot of time for the board to review policies. So Caitlin recommended maybe moving the policy committee to the first Monday, basically. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
So.
That'd be fine.
All right, well, if everyone's in agreement with that, then can I get a motion to approve the 2022 school board meetings as presented here with the, with the one change of the policy committee being on the first Monday?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023.
Or 2022.
2022. Meeting dates in the committee meetings.
Second.
All right, first and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving on then to designation of our school board committees. So Caitlin provided two documents. One is the committees that we're all currently serving on, and then the other one is a blank one, so we can add our changes. And Grant did email me, since he wasn't able to be here. Where did I put that? So for committees, he gave me his list of committees he's interested in, in the following Finance, which I believe he currently sits on. Policy, which he also currently sits on. He's interested in the DAC, which would be, he does not currently sit on. So those are his top three, and then Legislative, Insurance and Safety, and Facilities would be his next three choices. So, so those are Grants, what he's interested in. Does anyone else have any interest in changing committees, or kind of just open it up, I guess, from here, so?
Well, if he would like the DAC one.
Okay.
I would be interested in the Personnel one. I haven't done that one before.
Yep.
I would be interested in DAC maybe, or Facility Committees, Committee.
I guess, to make it kind of easy, I'm good with the four that I'm on.
Okay.
And I'm willing to stay on those four if that works.
Which ones are you on again?
Facilities.
Policy.
Personnel, DAC, and Policy.
Charlie or Scott, do you guys have thoughts?
Well, I'm, I'm fine where I'm at. I, you know, I would, it would be kind of interesting to be on the Policy Review Committee, but if that's, if that's, if the other folks want to keep it, that's fine, but that would be what I'd be interested in being on.
As something different?
Yeah. But I would.
And what else are you, oh yeah, Negotiations.
Yeah. Negotiations has been really busy this year. Next year, probably there won't be much.
Right.
I can go off of the Policy one if you want to do it.
Did you maybe want to switch into Insurance and Safety, or?
Yeah, I could do.
Maybe?
Yeah, I haven't been on that one.
Somebody, somebody else interested in Superintendent Review, but.
Well, and, like, I'm, what am I, I'm currently on Negotiations, Legislative, Evaluation, DAC, and Personnel. I'm definitely happy to, I don't mind not, I can, I can, I don't mind giving up DAC, because we currently already have three people interested in that one. And Negotiations, I would like to stay on because we're in the middle of negotiations, so I kind of don't really want to change that one. Adita, do you feel you want to stay on that one?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Certainly next year, if people want to move into Negotiations for the next round of, that would be fine to switch it up then, but right now, I feel like.
No, I think it would be good if you three.
Yeah.
Are willing to stay on that.
I'm willing to stay there, yes.
See things through.
And then, what else do I like? Oh, and then Personnel, and then, I don't mind, Evaluation Committee, I enjoy, too. Those are kind of my top three that I wouldn't mind staying on, but, but honestly, other than, other than Negotiations, I'm open to whatever, so. Scott, how about you?
I, I'd like to stay where I'm at.
Okay.
Because I'm on the Insurance and Safety, Personnel, and Finance, and Facilities.
You have to be on the Finance, right?
No, yep, yep.
All right, so Scott was Insurance and Safety, Finance, Facilities, Personnel. Okay.
Yep.
All right. So.
If you want to go off of the Superintendent one, I could help, you know, I could switch on that, that would.
Swap, we would swap them.
Because I've got four right now that I'm on.
All right, so Katie, you have.
Facilities, Personnel, Finance.
Yes, I'm good, yeah.
And Insurance.
Okay.
So if there was an extra one, I mean, I could take another one on, so I'll let people decide first.
All right.
Because I like the ones that I've, God.
So is this the one retired about the Bowser Review Committee, or?
Yep, because that's the one that you were interested in.
Yeah, I'm kind of interested in that, yeah.
If you haven't been on that one before, that's a good one to be on, so.
There's a lot of information, and it's really nice to.
All right, where are we at right now? So right now, Negotiations, I have Julie, Adita, Charlie. Legislative, right now, I have, Charlie's been on that, and you're willing to stay, you said, right?
Yeah, I'm willing to stay.
I'm willing to stay. I know Grant is willing to stay.
Yes.
What else did I have for Grant? Were Grant's, what did I say his top three choices were?
Finance, Policy, and DAC.
Oh, yeah. So, so I think I, so for like DAC, Dave, Adita, Grant, does that sound? Do you mind switching, or?
Yeah, I'm off of DAC.
Okay, cool.
Because Grant took that one.
Okay, so David, Adita, Grant. Facilities, I have Adita, Dave, Scott. Does that sound right, or no?
For what?
Oh, no, you were still on Facilities.
Yep.
So we might need to figure that one.
For what? For that one, yeah?
Oh, Adita did.
But, you know, it's just, I don't have to, it just.
Yep.
Yeah, whatever. You know, I'm fine where I am. It was just something to learn.
And what were the other ones that you were on, Adita? You're also on.
I'm still on Advisory Council with the Community Ed and the Professional Growth and Development Committee. No, I'm fine. I really don't need to, I was just.
Okay.
You know, trying to say that I would like to learn about those, but I don't want to.
Yep. Well, and obviously, we are, one of our board goals this year is to learn about Facilities regardless, so whether or not you're on that committee, you're definitely, we're definitely learning about Facilities this year. All right. And then, oh, Adita, you're cool staying on the Evaluation Committee?
Yes.
All right. And Finance, Katie, are you still on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, and Grant wanted that one still.
Yep.
So we'll keep that one the same. And then Insurance and Safety. Do we keep Grant on that one? Like, okay, so I have one, two, three. Oh, we can keep Grant on Polit, which, which ones are, how many do you have now, Katie?
I have Insurance and Safety, the Finance, the Facilities, and Personnel.
Okay.
And just to even it up, I mean, I can swap out the Facilities and do the Superintendent.
And then, let me see here. I was going to see how, how even we all are here. Well, if you, if you wanted to switch Evaluation, or Evaluation with Adita, and have Adita do Facilities, and you do Evaluation, that would be an option.
Yep, that'd be fine.
Would you want to do that? Switch that up?
Yeah, that sounds great. It's okay with Katie.
And then, Policy. Who all is on Policy?
Dave, Grant, and Charlie.
Oh, thank you. All right, then I think that'll put me on Insurance and Safety. So that'll be my fourth. And then, what do I have for Grant here? Oh. And then put Grant, or keep him on that one. Does that make sense? All right, so if we did Negotiations, Julie, Adita, Charlie. Legislative, Julie, Charlie, Grant. Arena Board, Charlie, you're fine staying on Arena Board?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Community Ed, Adita. Insurance and Safety, Scott, Katie, Julie. Is that right? Policy, Dave, Charlie, Grant. Oh, Superintendent Evaluation. Charlie, are you still on that one?
No, he, oh, that's right. That's the one you were trying to go off of.
That was the one I was trying to.
Okay, yep.
That's all right, I can stay, I'll stay on, that's fine. I kind of been on, you know, that whole development of that, so it's fine.
Well, I'm trying to, I think we have it almost, almost where everyone has about four committees, and so I'm just trying to, so if you end up on that one, you might have one extra committee, but, so Evaluation is Julie, Katie, Charlie. Finance, Scott, Grant, Katie. DAC, Dave, Adita, Grant. Facilities, Adita, Dave, Scott. PG&amp;D, Adita. And then Personnel, Katie, Dave, Scott. Is that, is that about four for everyone? Is that right?
Five.
You have five? And Charlie has five?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I'm willing to pick up a different one if five is too much for either one of you, so. All right.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
The Arena Board, that doesn't meet all at once.
Okay.
So it's fine.
All right.
Who was on Superintendent Eval? Charlie, Adita, and who?
No, it's Julie, Katie, Charlie.
But it was Adita before, now?
Yes, yep.
Katie, switch it.
Okay, thank you.
Got all that, Caitlin? All right. If everyone is good with this, and if at any time during the year it becomes too much and we need to make changes, please feel free just to speak up, because we can, we can move things around, so. Just because we're organizing it right now doesn't mean we can't change later on, so.
I have one question.
Yes.
Policy, we're scheduled to meet next Monday.
Monday.
But if we're going to change that to the first Monday, that would have been.
Well, we'll meet next Monday.
So, we're still going to meet next Monday?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All right, so.
Is that a 3:00 meeting, or 3:30 meeting, or what is that?
That one is a 4:00 meeting.
That's fine.
Supper, supper at 5:30.
Is that too late for you? Is that too late for you, Charlie?
Eric's mine, right?
All right, can I get a motion then to approve? Or do we, do we, do we approve all this stuff? I always forget, it feels, if it doesn't say like action items, I'm not sure, but we should make a motion and approve?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion then to approve our committees as discussed?
So moved.
Second.
All right, first and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion to designate our official newspaper?
I make, make a motion to designate Wasika County News as our official newspaper for year 2022.
Yes, for the calendar year 2022, yep.
County.
Second.
All right, first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion to designate our depositories?
I make a motion to designate our depositories. Do you want me to read them?
Yeah.
Presently, the arrangement is First National Bank, payroll, and trust fund scholarships, MinWest, Round Bank, all disbursements except payroll, MSD LAF, dispersments regarding building, bond, official, or, excuse me, facility projects, First National Bank, MinWest, Round Bank, United Prairie Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, and MSD Liquid Assets Fund, all may bid on investments.
And then do we read that last sentence, or?
We can.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, they're just recommending.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a first motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
First and a second. Any further discussion?
Just quick question, Wells Fargo is not anymore here. It doesn't do anything, or we just still, you know, the office here is closed, right?
Right, but Wells Fargo still exists. Yeah.
I know, it's just, you know, local. I'm just asking.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion to designate our school attorney?
I move to designate Patton, Hoverson, and Berg. Mr. William Hoverson as school attorney for the calendar year 2022.
Yep. First, can I get a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? And just a note here that the district reserves the right to consult with other attorneys for specialty reasons, so, particularly in areas that Patton, Hoverson, and Berg might not specialize in, so. All right, no further discussion. I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get someone to make a motion about establishing board member per diem and other
I make a motion to keep the, the rate for the 2022 year the same as previous.
Okay.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And then, last but not least, the established payment of claims schedule for 2022 just continues the order that we've been on.
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of claims schedule for 2022, continuing
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion?
Better write.
You're next, Dave.
Better write down my name.
Yeah. All right. No further discussion. I'll. No further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right, that is the end of the organization of our school board for the 2022 year, thank you all. Now, move on then to recognition of visitors. We don't have anyone here in person, did we receive any emails today? All right. Then we will move on to information items with the superintendent update.
Hey, good evening, thank you. I appreciate the time to give you some updates on a few things here this evening. First is, I just wanted to make a few comments on my goals, as we had established for this school year. Had a chance to visit with all members of the committee over the last week, and Charlie got back into town, we visited earlier this week about some things too, and had a chance to talk about where we are. Our vision card process, in terms of creating accountability for our buildings and for ourselves, is moving along nicely, we're having a good opportunity to develop those vision cards. The district vision card is continuing to be measured, we met just this last week, is it earlier this week already? As a leadership team, to talk about mid-year measures, looking forward to bringing some of those metrics to you here later this month, early February, with how we're doing mid-year towards our goals on the vision cards. So we are on progress for our buildings to have vision cards as this year develops, as well as our principals and leaders developing their own goals using that process. So we're feeling like we're making progress in that area, and I'm excited to see how this year goes, because, you know, last year gave us such a unique experience in terms of some of those academic measures, and I'm looking forward to seeing results as they come in this year. Community engagement continues to be a positive thing, our facility committee task force continues to meet, just had our fourth meeting prior to our board meeting tonight, working through what our facility recommendations may be coming up in the next few weeks, as well as getting out and visiting with staff, and having the opportunity to be out in the community as best I can. The, the winter break was a nice time to get to some events and things and see some, see some kids and families, that was fun. As I mentioned, facility planning is something that we're working through, we had a, I would consider it a very robust conversation with the task force today about what our next steps potentially could be. Right now, we're still in information gathering, and heads kind of swirling a little bit, understanding what I really appreciate about our task force members, our community members and parents right now, is they're asking a lot of questions about, where did we come from? What have we, what have we planned previously, what's the history of this conversation? Being very thoughtful and planful about what's happening. I think understanding we have some needs we have to look at with our facilities, but knowing that we also have to serve the best interest of our community and ourselves, in terms of being a fiscal host all the time as well. And then the final is, I just, it's kind of more of a positive thing for me, first semester of my doctoral program is complete, so I feel good about that, I passed everything, that's really good. But, you know, worked through that, and moving forward into this next semester here, starting next weekend. I did have the opportunity to bring some things to our leadership team this fall, some of the things that we're working on in terms of framing situations, and thinking about how we can use some graphic organizers to create some of our strategic planning, so feeling positive about moving forward in that regard. So I appreciated the, all the committee members' conversations over the last few, few weeks, and I feel like we're making progress towards our, towards the goals.
Yep.
So, any questions on that before I?
And I, I just want to jump in as, from the, from the evaluation committee, that we concur that he is making more than adequate progress towards his annual goals, so this, this is his official mid-year evaluation, and our meetings have been very informative, and he's definitely, every single meeting, he's very focused on his goals, and. We're excited to see where the end of the year brings us, so, yep.
Great, thank you. And then I, I just wanted to add just two updates, then also for the board that are kind of hot topic items right now, so we wanted to make sure that the board was in the loop on what's happening here, on some things that we have to respond to. The first is, you may have read that the CDC has published some changed guidelines in terms of what isolation would be, whether it's 10 days, or then five days with a mask, and, you know, it seems to me that, what my observation was, by the time it hit the news, they had changed it again for the last week or so. But the, the short version is, the Minnesota Department of Health is currently reviewing those CDC guidelines, and they basically told us, beginning of next week, we'll have some updated guidance for schools. We are following our continued procedures, there's nothing that we're looking at proactively changing. Our goal has been, the entire pandemic, to safely and responsibly work with families to get kids and staff back to school as quickly as possible, and so we'll continue to do that. So if the recommendations allow us to bring students back to school safely sooner than we previously had, we will certainly make that move, but we're not going to do that until we have all the information, which the Department of Health will give us next week. The exact line from the email yesterday was, well, until we review, you can do whatever you want. You can do what we are currently telling you to do, or you can do the CDC, and we're thinking that's just a dangerous precedent to be setting, so particularly as we are watching our absences coming out. I, I mentioned this in the board update yesterday, we're not seeing a huge spike in positive cases coming out of the winter break, but we're watching our absences very closely. Kids are sick for lots of reasons, and so we're in the purpose of making sure that we're, we're student, we're encouraging students and staff to stay home when they are ill, and as soon as they can come back, we're happy to have them back. So we'll be making adjustments on that, we'll be communicating that with families with that as well, as this thing just continues to, to move forward. But I'm very proud of our staff, I want to give a shout out to Deb Wabshaw and our health services staff for really managing, working with families and staff, she talks to people, countless people, about how to support their child through an illness or an absence, and, and she does nothing but a professional, exceptional job every time, so thank you to her for that. Is, is very welcome. And then the last thing I just want to make the board aware of, and, and our staff will be hearing about this tomorrow, you know, the, the federal OSHA has issued what's called an emergency temporary standard, I mentioned this yesterday in the update a little bit, and essentially, all employers that have more than 100 employees are now going to be required to implement a policy to require either vaccination or weekly testing and masking, and that's, that's law. Now, what happens is, the state of Minnesota has its own OSHA, which then, basically what they said was, we adopt this by reference, meaning they're going to just take it and say, okay, fine. This actually happened back in November, but through multiple litigation processes, there was a stay on it for several weeks, meaning we just, Minnesota OSHA said, we're just not going to do anything about it. Well, that stay has been lifted by the Sixth Circuit Court out of Ohio, week before Christmas, I think, and so as of next week, we are expected to be implementing that. And so we'll be notifying staff tomorrow that we will be having to collect that information, we'll be having to, we'll work with people, we'll be reasonable, we want to make sure that we follow the, the law, and, and MSBA and MASA was very clear that we don't really have the option to just willfully decide not to. As board members and administrators, we do become liable if we just willfully decide not to do that, so we don't really have a choice, and that, I think that's, as much as we're going to lead through it positively and, and proactively, I think it's also fair to honestly say, this is something we're being required to do. This isn't a school board choice, this isn't really a, a district choice, but we'll move through it. The wrinkle with all of this is that tomorrow morning, well, morning I assume, tomorrow, the Supreme Court will be hearing this, and the chances are there that they will just continue to put a stay on it. They'll say, oh, sorry, never mind, now hold again, and then we won't do anything. And so part of the communication that I drafted to staff is, if it's in a stay, we'll just stop collecting that information for the time being, and we'll, we'll see where it goes. I'm, it's a, it's a, always considered a temporary standard, so even initially, if it were to go into place, they're expecting it to be six months or so, and again, we'll work with staff, we, on what we have to do, we have until February 9th, I believe, is the date we have to have our testing system in place, so it really becomes now just collecting that information from staff. It'll be confidential and a file away from their personnel file, so they don't, and if, if the emergency temporary standards was, were to go away, they've been very clear that's to be destroyed, all that information, so it's, we're not, we're unfortunately not doing anything other than what we're required to do. But staff will get some information on that tomorrow morning, you'll see an email, but I wanted to, rather than write four pages yesterday in the update, I wanted to quick give a, a brief oral update of that as well. Doesn't impact our students at this time, and it, it's, it's just something that we're going to have to work through. Any thoughts or questions on that before?
So we don't have to establish a policy for that at this time?
Good question, we do, we do have to establish a policy, however, what MSBA has said is that you don't have to have a special meeting to do that, you can follow your policy adoption process.
Okay.
And as long as you're starting the process, then all indications are that we, in good faith effort, we're okay, so we can, the short answer is, we can wait till January 20th to, to look at that, and we have a model policy that we can look at.
And it would take two meetings to actually adopt it, right?
Actually, through our policy, I want to say it's 208, we can adopt an emergency policy based on law.
Okay.
If we have to do that, in, in one, in one reading.
Okay.
But it, it says right in the, right in the policy, we, it goes away, if the standard goes away.
Okay.
And so we'll look at it between now, fortunately, between now and January 20th, I'm hopeful that it'll either, there'll be some more resolution, whether or not this is actually going to move forward or not. We kind of have been, I won't say use the word tiptoeing, but we've been making sure that we have all as much information as we can. So I, I do think that some staff might feel a little bit like, well, how come I heard, heard about this till tomorrow? But at the same time, we didn't want to communicate anything proactively that we didn't know all the information around, so it just kind of is where we are. But, yeah, good question, however, most districts are deciding not to just hastily do something this week, but they're opting to wait till their next regular meeting.
Okay.
And then in good faith, start and go from there, so.
How often are the testing requirements going to be then?
Weekly.
Weekly, okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we have, you know, it's, it's very, it's, it's a unique scenario, because the, and I, Elizabeth, you can help me out with this if I get the language wrong, I think the exact language is, it can't be a test that is administered and read by only the employee. So it, and it, so in other words.
So you can't just do it at home and say?
Can't just do it at home and tell us.
Gotcha.
So they have to have, it has to be lab results, or we have to have an employee.
Yep.
Sit there and watch them take the test. Rapid tests, antigen tests are not allowable.
They are allowed?
They're not allowable, yeah, so it's, it's, and it remains to be seen if we, if we're obligated to pay for these for staff or not. It's a, it's, there's some questions to be answered, but we're working through it. And again, I, I'll have to be in all transparency, I spent some time over the winter break thinking, boy, I don't know if this is the best thing for us, but as we lead through it now, we know that we're going to do the best we can for our staff and work through it, and, and just take care of people, and, and do what we have to do, so.
Other questions about? All right, thank you, and I appreciate the, as always, the weekly updates and, and keeping us informed, but obviously, I'm sure there'll be more of an update on this at our, at our next meeting, so.
Certainly.
Yeah. All right, then moving on to action items, and we have no action items tonight, so that's lovely, so. Unless, yeah, no action items, yeah, awesome. So then that just moves on to upcoming events and reminders, reminder, our next regular meeting is Thursday, January 20th at 5:30. Next week is the MSBA Leadership Conference, how many of us here are planning to attend the conference? Scott is, Adita? Davis, what's your watching?
I was going to try and go, but with everything that's going on, I.
Yep.
I don't know. What do you think, Charlie?
Yeah, I'm not going.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just had to cancel today, so, so those of you that are going, I really appreciate your time, and I look forward to hearing from you, what you're.
Are you going?
I can't go now, no.
I am.
You are?
I can't go.
You can't go?
I know, I was, I was planning, we'll see.
Yeah.
And then Grant was planning, I'm going too, if I can break.
Oh, I think you're right, yes.
I'd love to.
Yeah, I think you are.
This is always a good time.
I know, I.
This is my favorite event.
And as of yesterday, Kirk Schneiderwin mentioned that they're, they're going, they're planning on it in person until they're told they can't.
Okay.
And so between now and next Wednesday seems like an eternity, in terms of what could change between now and then.
Yep.
And so we'll just, we'll adjust and forward to seeing as many of theirs as we can.
Is it possible they could not, not have it?
I, I'm hopeful that it remains the way it is, but the way things are rapidly changing, particularly in the metro, it wouldn't shock me if they went virtual with it.
Like your delegate assembly went, they went virtual really last minute, so.
But, but as of right now, it was, the message was bring your masks, because St. Paul and Minneapolis are requiring it, but we'll see you then.
Yeah.
So that was it, yesterday's MASA meeting.
Well, there'll be time at our January 20th meeting for board members who do attend the conference to share any, anything that you've learned, and stuff that you want to share with the rest of the board and the public in general, so, but again, I really, really appreciate everyone going and giving their time, and I wish I could, next year, so hopefully.
Well, we even kind of discussed, maybe we could do something as a retreat type thing with the board as a.
Yeah, maybe do something again, yep, that'd be nice. So, think of topics that maybe we could throw into our board goals for the year or something, yep. And then Monday, January 17th, Martin Luther King Day, there is no school for students, it is our next district-wide professional development day, so. Thank you to all of our staff for continuing with their professional development, I really appreciate that, so. Any other announcements or reminders? All right. With nothing else then, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.